So this time the motion to move into discussion in a second.
In a second?
Second.
And vote, vote by hand, show of hands, alright? Four zero approved, motion carried. Okay, so the first, uh, new business tonight is Mr. Allen.
Okay, our first new business tonight is a variance application twenty-five, twenty-three V, Brandon Shiflett owner, eleven-twenty Malier Road, or Malier, however you say that, parcel two-five-four zero-two-zero-two-eight D, located in land lot forty-three of the third land district, is requesting reduction in a required lot size of three acres for AR one parcels. Property contains four point eight-eight acres.
Favor that, uh, does anyone have a motion for this, for this item?
Uh, you, you were in public hearing.
Alright.
So, there are two people who've signed up this evening, Mr. Chair, for a public hearing. Michael Swifflett, if you would, please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Shiflett, um, I live at fifty-four sixty-six Wood Oak Drive in Macon, Georgia, in Bibb County. And first of all, I'd like to thank y'all for opening up with prayer and the pledge of the flag. I was just in a, a session like this in Bibb County, and they did no such thing, so I really appreciate it, thank you so much. You know, this property that we're talking about here was, was a property that my dad and my mom bought in nineteen fifty-one, and they moved out there in a little country house, which dad expanded on and raised the family. He had twenty-five acres, he had five kids, and he divided it up to give to us as his only inheritance. And I received the old home place at four point eight acres upon the event of their death, which they're gone. And so I have two boys who both are here tonight, and a couple of years ago, it got beyond what I could keep up in the distance I was traveling, so I turned it over to my eldest son, Brandon. So, I, my desire at the time, and I had no idea that there was a, um, a ruling saying it had to be three acres, I just was gonna split the property and give each one of my sons equal part. But, um, you know, we're prepared to do whatever's necess- necessary, but I would like to give it to them as, as an inheritance from me. Uh, they've always wanted the property, uh, they, as little boys, they played on it and grew up there. And so, um, you know, uh, we're even willing to like put three acres in the, in the lower half that has no, oh, ha- home place on it, and the other place too, uh, one point eight-eight acres to finish up with the old home place that's on it. Just whatever you will allow, but I would hope that you would allow that, and it's just as simple as that, it's just no other thing here. It's just an inheritance I'd like to pass on to my sons.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Brandon Shiflett?
Hey, I'm Brandon Shiflett, that's my dad and, uh, he-
Your address, your address, please, sir?
I'm three eighty Martin Dairy Road in Milner.
Okay.
And, uh, I don't know what else I can add to what daddy just said, so that's basically it, guys.
Alright, thank you very much.
You know, my, it's always gonna be mine and my brother's, so I didn't know he was gonna have an issue with the split, so that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Y'all appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's all who've signed up for the application this evening. Uh, you may want to close public hearing at this point.
Okay, I would need a motion to close this, uh, session, second.
Second.
Close, uh, raise your hand, this part, agree? Okay, uh, all agree, yeah, motion, motion passed, four zero. Uh, so we need a motion, uh-
You want to hear the staff's recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Staff recommendation is for approval for this, as you'll see from their new survey, they drew out, the parcels are indeed two point four-four acres apiece. That is just below the three acre minimum, however, if you look from the map itself, there is, uh, plenty of buildable area on these lots. That's not an issue at all, they're very wide, um, so having, uh, point five-six acres, less than three acres on each lot, will not impact the builda- buil- buildability of lot one at all. And even lot two, they choose to get rid of that house on there and build another one, there's more than enough room, so staff does not have a problem with these being both two point four-four acres apiece.
So with that, uh, before we move into discussion, uh, we need a motion before you, can, uh, motion in the second? So-
Motion to move into discussion?
Motion- Motion to approve or not to approve?
Oh, should we do that before discussion?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second that motion? Or no, we're not voting yet, not voting yet, we're, we're in discussion phase. So, I do have a question, uh, six questions to say is mine, so, Mr. Shiflett mentioned one piece being three acres, and one piece being one point eight-eight acres, I believe, but in the assessment is saying it was gonna be split evenly. So it just needs to determine what's the, what's the intended size?
He was basically saying as a option, if you, basically you're asking for a variance for both lots. He was saying if you wanted to do it, three acres on one and make it a full legal lot, and just have a variance for the second lot, he'd be open to that, but while I appreciate that, I think it's best, in my view, as zoning administrator, to keep it like this with a, like, split equal area.
I would agree.
I, I have a follow-up question to that, so we're splitting it two point four-four, um, is this a variance on both pieces of property, since one already has a home on it, or is that grandfathered in because it already has a home? So, for example, you said if they wanted to tear that house down, I'm not saying you guys would, but if they wanted to tear it down and build another house on that lot, are they gonna have to come back and get a variance for that, for that lot as well?
No, that, you're-
For both?
You're doing it both at the same time for both of them.
That's my only question. So, so what we vote on with this motion, it would split the, to, it would, would split the property directly in half? Just equal, equal, two equal parts?
Yes, one to one brother, one to the other brother.
This point, ready, yeah, ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote. Make a motion to, sorry, may I?
Yeah, right, right, man.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we're just ready to vote, yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
So, all in favor of, uh, the motion, show of a raised hand, uh, has, the motion is moved, the motion is moved, uh, four zero. It's been passed.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number two. Okay, so moving on to number two, but I believe we've gotta go back into open session at this point, is that?
It does. I'll introduce a topic, and then you can open the, your public hearing for that. So variance application twenty-five dash twenty-four V, Carl and Sherri Trimble, owner, twenty-nine ninety West Ellis Road, parcel two-six-five zero-two-zero-one-three B, is a boy, located in land lot twenty of the fourth land district, is requesting to allow a detached garage to be built in the front yard of a residence, property contains one acre.
So, we need a motion to move into open session at this point, make a motion, second? Uh, on, uh, vote, if I raised hand, okay, motion's passed, four zero.
Mr. Chair, there's no one who has signed up this evening for, uh, for this application.
You, are you Mr. Trimble?
I am.
Okay, he's the applicant.
It's up to you as to whether or not you-
That's, that's fine.
Mr. Trimble, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, Carl Trimble, twenty-nine ninety West Ellis Road, Griffin, Georgia.
Please go ahead, yes, sir.
Um, like I said, I'm applying, applying to get a detached garage, and it's acre lot, uh, and as you see, my house on the, uh, sits on the acre, it sits back, so most of the acre is in the front off to the side, and we know what your court has to be beside or behind it, but as you see, I can't, can't go on either side, can't go in the back. The only spot is kinda off to the side in front of it a little bit, well, I have a drive-offs anyway, but it, that's the only spot it could, uh, fit on the acre lot, so that's why I was trying to apply for the variance, see if I could get, build it down.
That it?
Yeah, that's it.
Alright, thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, you would need to close public hearing?
Okay, we need to close the public hearing at this point, need a motion to close.
Make a motion to close.
Second? And vote, uh, four zero, motion to close the public session has passed. Uh, now, at this point, uh, we need to, once again, we need to make a motion on this, now-
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of points of discussion in the staff report, so if you would. Alright, so as you can see from the site plan, um, he is right, if, there's no garage out there now, they park on the driveway, um, they'd like to have a protected garage, there is no other place to put it due to the shape of the property, where the house is positioned, and the low amount of acreage on the property. Um, so I did recommend it for approval with, uh, several conditions. We did, I did forward every board member a, uh, concern from a, uh, nearby property owner about some possible drainage issues with it, um, so I did forward that to y'all about a week ago, when I received that. Um, so I tried to reflect that in the approval conditions, um, also, it looks like at some point y'all had tried to start building it before, and just stopped, or-
Sir, if you're gonna make a statement, if you, sir, if, sir, i- if you're gonna make a statement, if you would, please step forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, uh, board members, uh, my name is, uh, Charles Caldwell, okay, um-
Your, your address, sir?
Seventeen nineteen South McDonald Road, Griffin, Georgia.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, yes, um, we had to kinda deal a layout out there to kinda see, um, where we could kinda position it at, and, um, then we applied, we applied for a permit, and that's where we found out we couldn't do it. Okay, so, um, that's why we're here today, to try to see if we can get a variance to-
So you didn't actually pour any concrete, there's just the boards and, uh, maybe some gravel, that's it?
We just kinda framed it up, uh, and then, uh, cause for some reason, uh, when we contacted the, for some reason, we, the, uh, the guy that was gonna pull the concrete, he, he, he had filed for the permit, and it said something about it was approved, and then we found out it was disapproved or wasn't approved or something. So it was a misunderstanding there, and that's why that we, we had framed it up, and that's why we're here today, and thank you, board members and everybody.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I had recommended for approval, I did have some conditions attached to it based on, uh, to cover the concern, as well as a couple of other issues, uh, approval condition, number one, garage shall match the color and exterior material of the existing house. Number two, existing trees along the front property line should be preserved to the maximum extent possible. There's quite a few trees along both roads, I think that'll be handy in, in masking the, the look of the garage on the property. And number three, an erosion control plan showing protection for the property to the south shall be provided with the construction documents. So, those are my approval conditions.
Okay, so, at this point, before we move into our discussion, because I know I have some discussion questions and input before we, uh, make a decision, but we needed, we need a motion at this point to move forward, to move into discussion. I guess, I'm more, at this point, I'm more apt to not approve it, because a lot of unknown factors, that would be my motion to not approve at this point. I'm more of a second that or not.
So- Can, can the chairman make a motion?
Technically, the chair could make a motion because he's a voting member, but, um, it, it's best if the, the members actually make the motion, but it, it's up to the chair.
Well, if it's best that the members make the motion, then the members should make the motion.
I'll make a motion, since the staff already, he've already looked into it, and got your conditions, let's go with the conditions, uh, long they followed the conditions, he already, uh, went out there and checked out everything, so, I said, I make a motion, I'm with him.
To approve?
I approve.
With the conditions? And I'll second that motion.
Yes.
Yeah, show of our hands, vote?
Oh, you're not voting yet, you want a discussion?
That's right, sorry, getting, getting ahead of myself, sorry. So, yes, at this point, we're moving into discussion. So, I guess, a big question I have is, do you have a plan of the style and size and how the garage is gonna be?
I know the size, I don't have a building elevation yet, showing the style just yet, till we got this variance taken care of first.
I'll, I'll follow up, cause I think this is kinda what you're asking, um, cause my question also kinda played into that too. So as far as building this, it will meet the same setback requirements and everything as building a home on that property? Like as far, you know, off of the property line, off of the roadway, from the front, all the setback and everything-
Yeah, it's a little bit different for a detached accessory building than it is for the main house, the setbacks are somewhat less.
So there's still our requirements?
Yes.
So, we'll still have a setback from the road, cause I think it, that property goes all the way to Ellis, or to Vaughan, excuse me. Goes all, it's an oddly shaped lot. Makes it difficult. So, we'd still have that to kinda appease the next door neighbors and keep everything cohesive?
Yes, um, and as I was saying, they need to, when they do a permit, you don't normally do this, but they'll need to do some kind of erosion plan with some silt fence and stuff down on that side to make sure, while it's being built, there's not a lot of facilitation and stuff like that.
And, and to Mr. Slaughter's point, all of that still, like, they still have to go through the process of having the building itself approved. So this is just for the variance, so all the other things still have to go through?
Yeah, the, the structural stuff.
Process, and, you know, how it's gonna be put together.
Yes.
Okay, so, this type of building would be allowed by code to be constructed in that location?
A detached garage, yes, sir. The use, yes, but it, normally it's in the, um, if you have less than five acres, it's in the side or rear yard, and as we see from the layout of this property, that's not, that's not possible, but you still need a variance.
I guess my biggest concern is that, you know, that it actually, I mean, we're voting a variance, that something can be built there. You know, right now, it's stating it's gonna be a garage, but once we approve this area, that something, structure can be built on it, then do what, how do we, how do we make sure that it's actually a garage and not something else?
You could stipulate an approval conditions for a garage, vehicle parking only, or garage, no living quarters, or something along those lines.
How do y'all sound? No, no further questions?
Make a motion to close discussion?
So, we're at the point with, that we voted this point.
Oh, so we don't close discussion?
No, no, it's already been closed.
Okay.
Right, we've already made a motion, seconded, and discussed it, and now, now we can vote.
True.
That's correct. So at this point, uh, we vote it to go with the motion, which the motion standing now is that it is approved to change the status to where a structure can be built.
With conditions.
With conditions. Now, do we make those conditions at this point, or after we vote?
They're already made.
Okay.
They're already read into the record.
You're ready for the vote, sir?
Well, I guess, like, uh, Mr. Allen stated, putting other conditions in to make sure that it's a garage, like garage doors, no living facility, uh, included in the structure, but how do we, how do we determine that that's taking place?
Well, yeah, you, you could put it as a condition, which makes it a, a matter of record for approval, and then when we get the plans, we look at them and you make sure there's nothing but a, a bedroom, or something along those lines, and then when the inspector goes out, he makes sure also it's just storage space and parking of cars.
That's the building inspection.
Yes.
So, I mean, that would be, that would be one of the other additional conditions that, you know, it is designed and it is constructed for garage use, enclosed garage use, with no living quarters included.
Well, have that as condition, condition number four.
So we have to vote on the first motion before, and vote that down, and then raise a new motion?
So, so what I- So, so what I understand is that this is an amendment to the motion, so Ms. Patricia would have to accept the amendment, and you would have to agree under second to accept the amendment.
Okay. You would have to amend your motion, do you wanna amend your, your motion to include, uh, a fourth item saying that it can only be used as a garage, and no living quarters, only storage?
Well, I, I agree to what they wanted to, wanted, uh, the garage, and, and the staff, he did approve it. So I mean, a garage is a garage, if I wanna, I mean, when you get a garage, I mean, if you wanna put, I mean, I'm just saying, uh, a bicycle, and I mean, a garage is a garage, you know, a car, garage, I mean, so I, I approve of what the staff, he's already checked it out.
And I, and I agree with-
Just before, I do agree with the fourth condition, cause not necessarily them, but let's say somebody else, a new owner came along, and then tried to use it as a living quarter, so that's probably necessary to do that.
But, but Spartan County, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't allow multi-dwelling parcels anyway, so we would already have a standing rule against that to begin with, correct?
Uh, you can have a mother-in-law suite on a piece of property with a main house, so that's a possibility. But it really, that should always be in the backyard, so, like I said, not necessarily them, but if somebody came along ten years from now, and I ain't gonna make that a mother-in-law suite, this would prevent them from doing something.
This is just trying to protect the neighborhood, the community, that it, that it doesn't turn into something that wasn't actually asked for.
Correct.
So, in, anywhere that, years later, like Mr. Allen said, so.
You guys, are, are y'all okay with that fourth condition? Does that work for y'all?
Yes, yeah, we do.
Okay. Well, I make a motion, other board.
Do we need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so now we take one vote that approves everything.
That's correct.
Okay, show of hands, uh, you vote, okay, motion is passed, four zero.
Thank you, guys, appreciate you.
And we'll, we'll get with y'all now on the building permit, so.
Thank you.
I'll take care. Okay, uh, so we're already, hello, we've closed that session, right?
Yes, we, yes, you're at the minutes.
We're at the minutes, alright, so we're at the minutes now, uh, to approve the April tenth minutes. Is there one?
I make a motion to approve, they look good to me.
Second?
Did you do the minutes? Did you do? Great job.
I did.
You did them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Robert.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, and vote? Ms. Parks, are you, we're voting to approve the minutes from April, are you?
And I know you weren't here, so if you wanna abstain, that, I understand, I did my first time around, so.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to read right quick, what it was.
But take the time if you wanna read through it.
What exactly is it, I'm brief reading, could you recap that with me?
The April?
Yes.
Yes, it's just a, a summary of what occurred during the April tenth meeting, and it's got, that meeting had a lot of different items on it, but they were all related to one subdivision, and we tabled everything, and it was, yeah, so we tell you, it was, it was a quick, easy meeting, so.
Ms. Parks, I've got you down as an abstention for that meeting, since you weren't here, then it, it just makes sense for you to be an abstention. I think we've got enough votes, it, it's perfectly fine.
Okay, so, motion passed to approve the meeting minutes. Uh, now we're moving to the board member comments, we'll start at you, Ms. Parks, do you have any comments to state at this time?
I'm not, not at this time, no.
No, not at this time.
Mr. Smith?
Welcome, Ms. Parks.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's good to see y'all good tonight, so thanks for coming, so, and that's all I have. And at this point-
Make a motion to adjourn? Do we need a motion?
We do need a motion.
Yes, we do. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, I can too.
Second.
All of them? Four zero approved.
Okay.
Meeting is closed.
Thank you.